Twenty four two thousand and seventeen and we are starting off today with Rich Alcarey to discuss proposed changes to the timeframes for residential building permits.
Okay.
Rich, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So I started out really just cleaning up the hoarding. It wasn't really meant to change any of the timeframes.
Oh, it wasn't meant to.
No, most of the timeframes stayed the same. The only things that changed was how how it was worded. There was a couple of them that was a little weird. It was for both residential or commercial. They give you a certain amount of time. Then it would say if the ext- or if the exterior of the building including final grade according to the plans is not completed in twelve months, they never told you there was an actual timeframe for the actual permit. You know what I mean? So it was like, okay, so if they complete the outside of the building, would they could they just leave the inside forever? So I think it was meant to mean fully done within a amount of time. So that was one of the first thing I did was just cleaning up that. And it actually all started before that was that it's always been custom to if something needed more than one extension, they were granted. Our code only really allowed us to grant one. It always said it was okay for to grant an extension. So it was really, I was like, oh, I was like, you know, we have people that sometimes need to, very unfortunately. So if with good inform- with good reason. So we wanted to make it so this way nobody would ever be able to question why we granted more than one extension to somebody. So that was the real reason for changes.
So just it was to clean it up so that.
Just to clean, cleaning up the wording, so it was more in line with how it's always been done.
When I read it and I don't have it, fortunately the language isn't in the packet. Yeah.
I didn't make a bunch of that.
Sorry, I just think I thought it was actually saying that it must be completed within one year and as you know.
It does, it does, it does.
That's gonna be.
Well, you can grant extensions.
That's how it's old, that's how it's old.
They can grant extensions.
So the.
Well, it went from twenty four months to twelve months.
No.
No, the commercial was twenty four.
Commercial.
Do you have more than one copy or can I have?
Yeah.
I can make copies.
Yeah, why don't we like your copies?
This is not, this is.
So we need to go back.
I think I might have seen the chicken coops with you.
Wait a second. Yeah.
Would this apply to the chicken coops too or?
It makes it for a much more lively.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do when we actually adopt this chicken coop thing?
Yeah, let's get chickens.
Right, that's it.
Well, you know, my cousin who lives in Westport, she rented the chickens for the summer.
Yeah.
She said it was awesome. You can rent them for just like six months.
Yeah, somebody tell me about that. I think that would be good, it's not too shitty.
And then somebody else who sets up the coop for you and does all of that.
They set the coop, they do everything and they teach you how to take care of them and then. No, 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 you have to clean them. Clean them. But then you don't have to house them for the winter. It's really just kind of for the summer, spring, fall.
It's actually a good idea.
Yeah, it is a good idea.
What about the putsch back?
It wasn't expensive.
Yeah.
Twenty five dollars a chicken from up.
Yeah, that's about what it was.
Yeah.
I know when I guess a hawk did uh
Two and a half chickens.
had take one chicken away and they had to pay for diseased chicken. But it was only, it was like, it was like thirty five dollars.
Did they have to prove it at a disease that will find out their chicken?
Well, you're returning one less, so.
They have to give like a security deposit on the chickens.
Yeah, somebody rented goats to clean their lawn at twenty five dollars per really goat per week. They come in, set the fence.
Kidding.
That's awesome.
Well, they get to clean them after though.
Fertilizing.
I guess.
What happens if the chicken doesn't, when did you get a money back guarantee?
It doesn't perform.
If the chicken doesn't perform exactly. Like give a lot to it.
I think renting the chickens is a really sore idea.
Yeah. And then they take the coop away then back in season with ticks around.
No, seriously, I have new business. I have to rent chickens.
Right, chicken, that's it.
I'll deliver them.
Yes.
There we go.
It'll really be cheap.
Yeah, I'm sure that's gonna be, that's gonna be a real moneymaker, especially you know.
I'll shoot right with mine.
You're uh when you're.
Yeah, then you can be like, okay, now what do I do with them?
Oh, kind of like chicken.
A hundred like November. I forgot that I got a chicken.
It's pretty damn.
Forgot to clean it in business, but you ship the chickens to Florida in the winter.
There's.
No, I'm taking, I'm taking chicken pot pie.
You're taking the tops.
Oh, okay.
Chicken pot pie.
Chicken pot.
Fried chicken, chowlets.
Chicken chili.
We're we are recording.
Chicken wings. We are. We can go on. Yeah, we're recording.
So it's revolting.
It's all business.
It's all business.
Exploring.
All right, um actually, can we come, I think, so we can.
We're waiting for the copies, right?
Copies.
Yeah, so otherwise, do you want to go into the next topic or we just do that?
Yeah, let's do it.
The next one is authorization for Sabrina to attend the AK conference where I'm getting an award for the um for our comp fight. Which is pretty fabulous. Uh next is a request for increase in parking classes. So what we're proposing to do is to extend the remainder of the long road. Take those nine spots, assess how it alleviates the crowding situation. I mean, if we need to start on the other side, we will.
Do you want where?
So it should be like a little map in here.
Why would you call it toward the entrance?
Just like the whole road.
So we're just taking these over here. There's nine spots along this road that are not clean passes at this point, so we just seem to. We'll take this entire road and we'll see whether or not, you know, it helps to alleviate the crunch. We didn't realize, we have something like ninety seven permits and we only have forty spots. It aggravates people in the summer when those, that entire road is empty and people are driving to the back of the lot and that was the pushback.
Right.
So we're hoping to see if that happens.
I mean, when it gets early enough, Boo's location is still in a parking lot.
Yeah.
Location.
And I'm I'm okay, I'm okay with it, but at what point, like considering like it seems like we're all going electric and you know, like every manufacturer is coming out with electric cars. At what point it just normalizes almost? Like at what point do we kind of abandon, I mean, here it's fine, abandon this and then, you know.
Abandon, yeah.
When we get to the point where we have more like a.
That's what caused it, that's what caused that, Rich.
But the thing, the thing is, if you look at the spots, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but if you look at the spots.
Yeah, I agree, but.
Yeah, that's okay too.
If you look at the cars, I mean, in those spots, they're mostly Priuses and um.
Shared, yes, we can.
Right. The Priuses and some Teslas that feel. It's not like there's uh you know, Camrys or Corollas or other cars. I mean, there's a couples, but it's it's mostly.
Okay.
It looks like a Prius showroom.
Yeah, it really does.
I guess my my issue is just that, you know, I think we should do it because people bought the cars with the expectation that they have this, but at some point, you know.
At some point, yeah. Yeah.
But it's a lot.
Well, we have a. Well, we have ninety seven cars currently um that are eligible for pay for clean pass parking and we have a twelve thirteen hundred spot lot.
To be a long way to go.
So we still, yeah, we we have a long way to go there.
And it does work, you know, I mean, I listen to some people think that people don't buy the car just for that. But I'm telling you, we should actually, you know, if we know the names of the people, we should actually do a survey, but I'm I'm telling you from my personal experience.
This is spot.
And I'll admit it, and I'll admit it, that I got I got the car for the spot. And the fifty mile an hour that I get to the gallon is pretty good too, you know, but I did get it for the spot.
Got you the car.
It did. Just saying, any environment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
With the thing, any specific order.
So let's 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 look at it. So I'm looking at section two, which is the first change. So the first thing addresses commercial and the second one addresses.
Residential.
Residential. And um I'm assuming a building permit goes anything from a kitchen renovation, bathroom renovation to a gut renovation.
To new house.
To anything. And my understanding is, and I just kind of feel that to have something completed in twelve months depending on the project is unrealistic.
Well, that's why you have this six month. We don't, I don't get very many complaints or very many people coming, you know, for extensions. It doesn't happen like we're, that's why we didn't think of changing the timeframe. Cause there is a huge, you know, cry that people aren't getting things done. And I mean, also think about it from a neighbor's point of view. If you're next to a house that the person is dragging their feet on for some reason. And you have to live with the construction.
But I'm not so sure twelve months is dragging your feet depending on the extent of the renovation.
It can come in for an application to extend it.
Yeah, then you have six months to extend it, I can use. And that's why, that's one of the reasons we want to be able to extend it even more. Cause I mean, we do have people that run into a plethora of issues, you know, sickness or, you know, money, whatever the problem is.
Contractors or whatever.
And that's why we want to change it to be able to make sure that we're able to extend it more than once for.
Do you do you charge for the extension?
We do, it's it's half the original building permit fee, so it is expensive, so it's it's a
Wow.
Wow.
A motivator.
It's a motivation to get them done. I mean, you know, we do get some people that just, you know, don't get things done.
Right, wasn't the prior one that we had, it was twenty four months originally for?
No.
That was commercial.
That was commercial.
And actually.
Cause I know new construction, twelve months, that's like.
New construction actually seems to work. I mean, we have very good, we're very lucky here. Most of our contractors are the same ones that we deal with all the time. They usually do get them done within twelve months. Things that hold them up are sometimes plantings, you know, things that are not controllable because of weather. So it's never the end of the road if if they're off.
Is that a discretion discretionary fee?
No, it's, well, it's it is different and maybe, I don't know if this was the time to talk about this one, discussed this part two one day was uh it's a little difficult for people because if it's in addition, you're paying fifty percent of the original of the original fee. So you can, we just had somebody that paid five thousand dollars to renew. Um now if it's a um house, you're only paying five hundred.
Wait, what?
Let's say.
But see, the existing structure is only.
We don't forget the first schedule.
I thought it was based on, that was based on the cost of the construction.
Say that again?
He's just for the renewal.
Yeah, I thought it was two.
While he's going to grab that, I have a question or a bit of a hammer for you, but I don't want to, this is not to pick on the fire department, but I just see it as one of the properties right now. They buy the property next door, take out all the windows and now it looks horrifically ugly. Why does a, why are the windows knocked out? And is there something in the code that requires to knock out windows? Because now you have a structure sitting there with no windows.
They're taking down, they're taking down.
We're just, we're taking down.
And by with fire, they're covering with firewood.
Yeah, they they got the.
You're talking about the vet building.
Yeah, yeah, correct. So I'm saying is there a reason why that would happen?
I don't know.
Because it just, you have a blemish there.
I think they had some people, I think there was some vandalization. And I think also there was a.
Why?
I don't know. There was immediately. There was a reason, people were asking, somebody told me the reason why.
Yeah. Because the concern is you have a structure, whatever it may be, that's six there with boarding up windows as opposed to just leave the windows and make it look like a regular structure until it's time to do the work.
But maybe it's insurance.
Tonight's show.
Yeah, no, it's not true, yeah.
Right, I I don't know, we'd have to ask Rich of the code on that.
Um cause I I know that they have to do asbestos removal first, but they were getting the RFPs into the demolition momentarily.
Why does that mean you have to knock out the rest?
I don't know. I'm just saying that they're they are, the the taking down of the building is imminent. They're.
Have you applied for it?
It had been shorting out a few months back. That was literally right out of the gate. I'm just, I'm not picking on them per se, cause that's the structure in town that I see.
No, 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 no.
Maybe they took out the windows and they headed the way.
You're you're buying all the tape, everything, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure they have to take out the windows for the monitoring. All right, keep going. Anything else?
Oh, sure, let's go, okay. So um next is a request to, this is a shared services, so this is we'd like to piggyback onto on in Biden County for the Ford F fifty uh water department vehicle. And then we have an OGS mini bid for the Ford one fifty purchase of the uh another water department vehicle.
Okay.
All right, these have both been budgeted for this year. Um next is the repaving policy with regard to utility companies. So this is a conversation that we started because we we are very pleased to be working with Con Ed in our Route one twenty sidewalk project. However, we should have been done with the entire stretch. And we weren't because before DOT would let us proceed, they required us to go and speak with um Con Ed, the utilities, to see whether or not they had any work planned. And it was like pulling teeth. We finally got them to, you know, piggyback onto our project because basically what they told us is that if they didn't piggyback on next year or within the next two years, they were gonna come and rip up on the Ramy sidewalk. And we were like, that's just crazy. And they're like, well, we're not really ready yet. And I'm like, well, you know, if we split it in half, would you do half and then we'll do the other half? And if you notice, we started with the top half of Route one twenty sidewalk from Grathlin down to Ridgewood Terrace. That sidewalk was really in fine shape, relatively speaking to the lower portion, that was in shambles. Um the the wire meshing was through most of the places, it completely disintegrated. But the gas main was in far worse shape up top, so we followed Con Ed, not a problem. So we know that there are other streets in town where gas work has to be done. We've talked about this, you know, ad nauseam. Um Douglas, Marquardt, those streets are completely popped with gas um line repairs. There are patches like, you know, every fifty feet. And, you know, when Con Ed patches something, cause they know they're gonna come back and then in a couple of years taken, you know, rip it all out again, their patches are tenuous at best. Um so our roads are a mess and, you know, residents are very understandably looking at us to take and say, you know, when are you coming through and fixing it? Happy to fix it, but I'm not gonna fix it if Con Ed's coming through the next year and replacing it. And so we've tried to apply some sort of pressure to Con Ed. Frankly, we we started just by asking them, we're gonna be repaving these five roads next year. Do you have any any utility underneath that you might want to take and do? And we've gotten less than robust cooperation from them. We've gotten radio.
You know, it's funny with it, cause I don't we have an issue with polls that we don't want them. I mean, I I'm not saying that we would use that as leverage, but nonetheless, that certainly.
Yet yet something else. So um Jerry had commented to us that Scarskam has instituted a policy whereby if Con Ed comes in five years after they've taken the repair, they've taken and repaved a road. When Con Ed takes and does a repair, they can't just do a patch. They need to restore the entire road because that's a thirty year road that they've now significantly shortened the lifespan of. And that has helped motivate the utilities to cooperate and to come up with a um to be forthcoming in their list of uh gas mains that are be to be repaired. Now, I under, everybody understands that there are emergencies that come up. Look, it is gonna be, you know, an emergency rupture and something is is, you know, out of schedule, we get it and we understand that. But as a matter of course, there should be some sort of replacement schedule that Con Ed has, that they ought to be sharing with local municipalities. Because you're throwing good money out after that and you're tremendously inconveniencing everybody who lives on that stretch and it's just unfair.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
And there's also the problem of like, you know, you got people on Mark and Marquardt who are dying to have their road paved and quite honestly, I think Jerry would be the person to tell you.
They deserve it.
They deserved to have their road paved and we're not paving it because Con Ed has told us within the next five years.
They'll get to it.
They're gonna be replacing their gas lines, but they don't give us an exact date. And you can't, you know, it's it's tough to pave a road that has a thirty year, but the problem is, no.
But it can't wait five years that road.
No, 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 absolutely.
So.
No, they need to move ahead and it would be one thing if they gave us a list of roads and they said these these gas mains take precedence over Marquardt.
Right.
But they won't give us that.
So let's just get on the agenda to get this.
Yeah, I think we should do it, we gotta be tough with it.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Okay, all right.
And send a copy of the Con Ed just to. We've learned that they they respond to pressure and and potential monetary penalties.
They respond to action. Sure.
Yes, it's.
Well, cute may not be the right word, it's cute that they are cooperative on one issue, but then not so much on the other issue.
We'll see, they give us a lot of lip service on one issue, we'll see if we, you know.
They started to take the polls down.
No, they started, but you know.
So then let's let's take, let's take action. Let's tell, let's put it back on the, do we have that on the agenda at all in the future, do we have that on a?
We have another date coming in for them, I have to check.
Not them, I'm talking about the statute.
No, because they do.
We've kind of delayed it.
We delayed it, as long as we have.
Maybe we should put it on for public discussion.
Kick it around a little?
Yeah, let's let's consider.
See, see how the the progress is and look and get.
When's our, when's our meeting, Con Ed next?
It's not a bad idea. It's a great idea. I like that.
You're being recorded, gentlemen.
Are there any other like Con Ed related, Jill, maybe you guys, Jerry, are there any other Con Ed related approaches that that the town board can look at to make sure that they're being proactive for the town in all areas, not just, you know, this.
Well, we do have a downtown project that we're hoping that they're gonna be, be be quick about moving our polls when we need them to be here and do it. So we, you know, we very much like to work and to resolve all of these joint issues that I know that are very important to them as well, so.
Gotcha.
So we're gonna send them the draft local law for their review of metal.
Absolutely.
All right, Rich, one.
Yeah, no, that's a, all right, so.
We forgot about Rich. He's been disappearing.
The building trade renewal is uh five hundred dollars for res- residents, new residents for three months. And actually, I'm sorry.
Five hundred dollars for what?
Three months.
For three months.
And that was actually the ultimate.
For renewal, a renewal fee?
Renewal fee. Yeah, these are renewals, these are renewal fees only.
Oh, 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 I see, I see.
Yeah, the other thing else is based on cost, I'm sorry.
Right.
Um and the alteration edition was only three months also. I think in the past it was people were given six month, but the way the code ran was three. Alteration edition was fifty percent of the original building permit fee.
Wait, what?
Alteration edition, I'm sorry, alteration edition was fifty percent of the original building permit fee. Again, for three months. And then commercial was a thousand dollars for six months.
Commercial's a thousand and.
That's a fine.
That seems low.
Right, but it just seems very disparate, wide.
Well, it does, it just seems almost backwards for a lot of it.
Yeah, it does. Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we weren't, I wasn't looking at that, I was trying to just look at the language.
Yeah, but you know, now is really the, now is the time that we could.
No doubt.
When I talked to Drew, she was looking in January because of.
Yeah, so that. Right, we could.
We look at what some other municipalities doing.
Yeah, could.
I can imagine, yeah.
Could be looked at because it.
Cause I think the town board is supportive and like we've had a lot of conversations, you know, piecemeal.
Or me.
The timeframes, the timeframes is pretty much, it's different everywhere. A lot of people do have twelve month. No, not many people have a difference for commercial and, you know, it's usually the same for commercial or residential for the timeframe of the permit. We do have a little different for that. Um the highest place was North Castle, they do have a twenty four month, North Castle has.
For both residential and co.
Yeah, that's the only one I've seen like that.
I see one for residential, yeah, that's a bomb.
Twenty four months.
Everybody else, everybody else seemed, majority I thought twelve, there were a few that were eighteen. I didn't write them all down, but there was, it was a mix. Um twelve month has been working for us, I don't, I didn't see any major issues with it.
Okay. Okay. But the pricing does seem odd.
But I think that, I think what we'd like to see is, we'd like to see the existing fee schedules, not, you can email it, just sort of like, when you, what, you know, what percentage for commercial and residential
Pricing does.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
for the different types of permits that you're gonna pull and then any extension permits.
And I'd like to see what other, what other towns charge on that.
I'm sorry.
Right.
That's what I was, yeah.
Yeah, so no, no, but she, but she'd like to look is what what is now, what do we do currently?
And then how does that compare against other towns?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I've heard other towns charge more for commercial than they do for residential.
Well, for the actual, it's permit, yes.
Permit, yes.
Yes, the permit is more, um but the.
The renewal, so I I.
The renewal.
This extends from renewal same, seems weird.
The renewal is weird, it's it was, it was a very strange time, I was looking through it this year when it first started taking over to do a lot of this, I was like, why?
Of course.
Yeah.
That's a residential twenty percent and.
Especially somebody had five thousand, you know, somebody spent ten thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money.
Initially, yeah, to spend, that just seems like, you know, I've seen them.
And for a.
Yeah, I mean.
Quarter thousand, thousand?
This probably worked when your permit, when your building was twenty thousand dollar, you know, to do a job, you know, so the permit fee was a couple hundred, was a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
Permit fees to do an addition can be as much as a house now, but to do an alteration need to.
Right. And and I have to tell you that the more expensive the the initial price, the chances are that it's gonna go longer than the twelve months just because of the extent.
Right.
Sure, correct.
So now you're, it's a double whammy for somebody.
And the other issue with commercials is just so much more complicated, I mean, you know.
With commercial, they do have twenty four month, they have, they have.
No, no, I'm not talking about the time, just talking about the fee.
Yes, oh yeah, and and to, yeah, to renew it and it's more inspections. We do charge inspection fees for to that, to commercial, we do charge a hundred dollars for every inspection we did on a commercial job.
Right.
So we do get paid.
You know, at Chappell Cross and they pulled the permit obviously for Whole Foods because that's under construction.
Correct.
And was it done piecemeal or was the whole retail under one permit?
No, no, that's multiple permits right now. It's just the shell too, it's actually even the permit, those permits are gonna be inside permits, so right now you're, they're pulling permits for all the shells.
So so the only, and the only one, which and obviously the Whole Foods app shell permit was pulled, what other permits were pulled?
Whole Foods, uh none, not issued yet, but a lifetime.
Right.
And they did apply for all the other shells that are just not issued yet.
Because that's a lot of.
Start is clear.
We have to watch how we issue them too because of clearing and grading.
Of course. But but you know, from a complexity standpoint, obviously that's that's a major undertaking. You know, and that takes a lot of your time, I mean, that's a major undertaking.
It does, the nice thing is that once they're done with the shell, we'll give them a certificate of compliance on the shell, then Whole Foods will apply for their permit to finish shopping inside.
And you're gonna, you're gonna inspect all the refrigeration and everything?
Yeah. Well, we, there there's there, any commercial project like this, there's actually three inspectors, us, an engineer, the third party.
It's actually a position. So.
Gotcha.
So we we get reports from the engineer and everybody else to just, everybody, yeah, we're double checking, everybody's double checking.
And they certify everybody.
No, it's just.
No, no, just, I'm talking about from the permit.
So it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, timeline, it's still time consuming and then just to do the reviews on these things is kinda.
It's a big job. Wasn't Joe Mazzio staying to help with the chat question?
Bill is. Bill is still, he's doing our inspections, he's been coming in uh three to four days a week right now, a few hours a day, he's in twelve hours a week, it's like that.
Yes.
So then what we can do is set a public hearing under social law at your November fourteenth meeting.
Con Ed.
And then when you adopt it, we'll have the fee schedule set so that you can consider revising the fee schedule after you adopt law.
I understand, but and and maybe it's not the proper thing to say, but you know, like we don't obviously have a lot of commercial work in the town, you know, we do, we have, you know, the major shopping center going on now, we have Con Ed, or we have different projects that, you know, who knows what's down the public later.
Yeah.
So if we were gonna do anything from a commercial perspective with the permitting and the fees, we should do it like much sooner rather than later.
Now.
Later.
Yeah, cause there's a lot, there's.
It's a resolution, so whenever you have that information.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
If you know what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a lot of um.
I think I know what you're.
There's a lot of sub, sub permits that are gonna be happening up there, you know, once they get the buildings, that's just a building now, it's just a, you know, it's just a box.
You got, yeah, I'm very slick.
So now they have to take out a commercial permit to fill that box with something.
I I get it, I get it.
At uh whatever it is, so.
I get it, but like we're gonna do with the fees, we should do it ASAP.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So um we're gonna set the public hearing for the building permit, time change, so that's November fourteenth and then um.
But you'll get us the information we need prior to.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, so that will do sooner.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And then maybe we'll, maybe we'll do um the twelve, twelve fold as a um.
It'd be to the actual public hearing.
I'm interested in Barcliff because I think Barcliff has a.
I think the budget, they don't.
You know Barcliff.
Yeah, we do a four twelve.
So we should put this on.
I don't know the fees I checked.
But then, oh, the public hearing for that, for that.
Time frame.
Yeah. Cause I think they hired for four twelve fees.
Public hearing for four twelve.
Yeah.
For the building permits?
We come.
And they've got a lot of projects pending.
That's like the end of the language. If you need to do a resolution to each fee, we just do that.
Publicly, you can do that.
We just do that. Oh, this needs a thirty day timeframe and some campus, this is just the the, we got a lot of stuff going on.
This is uh.
This is a lot, a lot, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Before we do the, we talked about the fees next week and in the summer, do we have?
Absolutely, yes. Um it'll be on the eighth, so we'll talk about it on the eighth and we'll prove it on the fourteenth.
Sounds like. It needs to be really.
Like it.
Okay.
Yep.
So the eighth is gonna have a fee.
So so we'll bring back the fee schedule to your November eighth work session.
And Rich, when you come back with the fee schedule, could you kind of give us a, an idea of scope, like, you know, you know, with the Chappell Crossing project, if the budget, I have no idea, but if the budget's you know, it's a seventy five million dollar project or a hundred million dollar project, whatever, would I try, what?
That one will.
No, 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 and how, whatever, even, you know, even if you just give us a theoretical that if the project costs X and the fees are Y, in other words, like so we can extraculate, like, right?
Yeah. Oh, okay. The two.
Right, what it might cost so that, you know, we understand, we could, you know, you know, see it from their perspective.
Okay, good, good.
I got a question for you, Rich, before you go. I brought up in your absence. As I mentioned earlier, this is not to pick on the fire department, just the structure that I I know in town is is the V, the the veterinarian's office that they purchased. Is there anything, is there a reason why windows would be knocked out so early in the process and boarded up? Because just thinking out loud, you have a horrific blemish for months on end. And is there a reason why that would happen? Is there anything in our code going forward that we can institute investors a reason to do so? The outside of a building should not be made to look unattractive and 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 falling apart because it's just an eyesore in the community, it devalues property in the immediate vicinity. And if it's a means by which, and and I'm not saying it is, to get something done quicker because it is ugly and people galvanize behind it, I just want, what what can we do to stop that in the future?
You know, we just, Eric Nikleisen.
I can answer the question.
Yeah, please.
Insurance company wanted it boarded up for some funny purposes.
I agree.
They returned bids for the demolition are coming in this Thursday.
I knew they were coming.
Does that require though, when you say board up, why would that, that's a really real question to you. Why would that require boarding up windows that people can't get access to because they're on the second floor?
Cause we didn't want anybody going into the building.
Right, but then I.
And that's why you also have a fence around the entire property.
That I understand, but you know, on the second floor, how someone, how someone's, you know, gonna hop the fence and bring a ladder and climb up? So I just think there needs to be a a a meeting in the middle somewhere that says, yes, we need security and safety, yes, we have to comply with insurance. But and again, it's not to pick on the fire department, but that's a big structure that is this horrific eyesore and it's taken care of, the people live.
Well, hopefully, if the bids coming back this Thursday. The middle office of property agents would say that they have to board.
Assuming that they get, they don't have to go back and re-question some of the bids. My assumption is the bids will be awarded within a couple of weeks.
All right, so my, I.
And then thereafter, the contract would be in relatively quickly because he wants to do it before winter.
I think that's it, although, and that's, I'm glad that you pointed out to, but my question again would be, there's other means than boarding up every single window, one would assume, whether that's erecting a fence, I don't know if they're required to board up every window, it just becomes an eyesore.
That wasn't, yeah, it wasn't, wouldn't have been a state requirement or anything for them to board up the windows. If the window was broken out, yes, you would have to either replace the window or or board it up. Like Eric was saying, it sounds like it was their insurance company was asking him.
But I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what the standard is, I don't, is a fence enough, just going forward, I don't know, we don't have that many commercial properties.
Yeah, the second floor. I think we can see if there's any lighting.
If there's any property work that's downtown, when someone sells a property that gets.
Do we have white coat?
No. Originally, I wanted to do just the first floor and the insurance company came back and overruled me and said, no, they want the entire building done.
That's.
So the answer is you've got a question of them having availability of insurance or non-insurance. If you're operating on the basis that you don't want the second floor done. You got two competing problems that you've got on your hands. So the fire district, we did, we complied with what the insurance company wanted. There's asbestos within the building, so they wanted to make sure there was no exit, they're monitoring, they've been running air monitoring, et cetera, just to play it safe. And then the first thing to go out will be the asbestos under the contract. Second thing will be the building taken down and then there's approximately eight hundred yards of soil that's contaminated by pesticides which has to be trucked out and cleaned and then fresh sawed.
That's a drill.
It doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the DEC requirements, like to actually technically you could have, they're gonna, I think they not take it off first.
Well, the answer is what we're doing, the fire district is going, they've got monitors over towards the nursery school to make sure there's no dust or anything else
Just you know.
It's a.
that goes in that direction, they're going far beyond the code, just so there was no question that there was, you know, anything playing around or anything else to keep it down. And there's specific obligations on the contractor as to wetness of stuff and keeping let down and all this kind of stuff. You know, they've got three or four monitors set up all around the, or we'll have all around the property plus mobile monitors, monitors coming in, et cetera. It's a stack of contract like that just to demo demolish a bit with it.
Did you know I was gonna ask this question tonight?
No, you know what, yes, yes, we did.
That's like. Yes, ESPN?
Yeah.
A joke, yes, ESPN.
But but yes, I I knew it, so I I invited Eric to come.
But but yes, I I knew it, so I I invited Eric to come, he says, anything I can do, thank you.
I read most of the contract, so I'm aware of that.
I'll add another question. No, 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 it's okay, I, you answered it.
Okay.
Alright, why don't I, Richie, get it real quick.
Alright, and just the last thing on our agenda tonight is.
Thanks, Richie. Thanks, Rich, take care.
Thanks, Reggie, appreciate it. Um is um the Smith Street Green Space restoration. So on the corner of Smith Street and South Greeley, um we sort of reclaimed it as a bit of a construction storage yard. Um when this project is done or before that, we'd like to restore it. And so we started, we're just talking about.
A number of neighbors have actually contacted me about it and like I said, the kids are there, they they build snow castles in the winter.
Yeah, they. No, no, it's totally fine. So we're gonna restore, but the question is, you know, whether or not it should be like a little.
So so nice. That's the gateway to town.
Yeah, a little park, maybe a little.
Yeah, sure. Well, you say a park, assuming the neighbors would want.
I may be asking. Yeah, so that's the only thing is, is asking.
Yeah, but. Could be community garden for them.
Yeah, a garden or just a city park.
We should ask to them.
Yes, it's.
Yeah.
We should talk to them.
Okay, so it's.
It's a nice thing, of course, is they have taken the.
Could be a little like that pocket park.
Yeah, that's right.
They've taken the uh front of it.
I think it should be like, it should just be cost effective.
And what they want.
That's too bad.
Yeah, so we'll reach out to the neighbors. We should give the town hall ready.
Alright, so we done, we done with our work session for them?
Oh, I'm sorry, so the town hall, oh, that because I was an executive, that's why, sorry. That's the, that's the award bid.
Oh, right, 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 right.
We realized that we should, we shouldn't.
Nice.
Okay, and then um at what point?
So we'll be.
But there's something else.
You know what?
Can you tell the secrets, they'll tell everybody now. What, we done with our uh work session?
I know Nick and Jill are.
He's 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 not happy with the lack of documentation for the O G S or the piggybacking. Did we get any other paperwork?
I don't have it.
Do we have time to still do it and get the right paperwork?
I don't know what his timing is.
So, yeah, alright, so um. I I think if it goes to next week, it's not gonna hurt any, but.
We don't have a meeting that next week.
Yeah, we don't, cause it's our last.
Fifth meeting of the month.
No.
I think tomorrow.
Fifth Tuesday.
Is it?
Oh.
Yeah.
Wow, isn't that.
Going trick or treating?
It's crazy.
Yes, she is, and not taking us.
Oh, is it Halloween that day too?
Yes.
Wow.
Cool.
We we thought perhaps there might be board members who'd like to spend the evening with their children.
I know.
No.
Was one of those things. We try.
Put in trick or treat.
Alright, we've already did the town board meeting, or do you need to make a motion to adjourn or?
I have my candidate.
I think I might be one of those houses, you know, kids have some precise campfire.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, so there's.
So so those two will be removed from their agenda.
Wait, wait, so there's no town board meeting next week and then the week after is election day.
Okay.
So you mean on Wednesday.
Right, so they're being on Wednesday.
Or be on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Where we are, it was not, it's not plugged in.
Gonna be, gonna be tired May Thursday.
You guys will be exhausted.
I know.
Why, what's happening on the seventh?
Oh, well, they they have to bring the uh the results in.
election results.
Alright, should we, should we?
That's it, there starts at five thirty, the meeting in.
Yeah.
I moved to adjourn our town work session, work session, thank you.
Yes.
Second, little favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I don't know who says what anymore.